All right, good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of Livingston's planning board and notice of this meeting has been posted and distributed in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
You please take the role, Jackie.
Mr. Ratner. Mr. Reber. Mr. Diner. Mr. Diner. Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Gucci.
Here.
Ms. Vishnu.
Here.
Vice Chair Santola.
Here.
Chairman Fernandez.
Here.
We have our corps, we have our board attorney, assistant township engineer, and our planner consultant. We have a corps, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You can now call the first matter.
That matter that's scheduled for this evening is preliminary and final site plan variances for a major subdivision with variances thirty-six, thirty-eight, and forty-two East McLellanon Avenue, Block One, Seven Oh Six, lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Application number twenty-two-three-nine-pfspv and MHA SUBV East McLellanon Avenue LLC located in the R four zone.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. I first just want to go through the general procedure for tonight's hearing for those that this may be their first time here. So after, you know, we'll hear testimony and the outcome after the testimony can be approval of the application as presented, approval with conditions, or denial of the approval. We may need more sessions for tonight's meeting to get there. The applicant is represented by attorney who will explain the application. The applicant's attorney will call one or more witnesses to give sworn testimony in support of the application. Members of the board may ask the witness questions, and when the attorney for the applicant has no more questions for a witness, interested parties in favor of or in opposition to the application may question the witness about the witness's testimony. When all the applicant's witnesses have testified, if there is any entity or group formally appearing as a party in support of or in opposition to the application, the party may call witnesses. When all the witnesses of the parties have been heard, members of the public may give sworn statements for or against the application. When reaching its decision, this board may consider sworn testimony and evidence introduced as part of the record. An applicant must always establish that the proposed development is consistent with the specific township ordinances that applies to the site that the applicant wishes to develop. In addition to the site-specific ordinance, there are other provisions of the township ordinances and regulations that may be applicable. Again, the applicant must meet those requirements. For some requirements, the applicant may request waivers, deviations, or variances. For such requests, there are standards that must be met by the applicant before the requested relief can be granted. So is there any attorney here that wants to make a formal appearance in the matter? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Passata?
All right, thank you so very much. Good evening, my name is Matthew Passata, I'm with the law firm Sales Commiss and Gross, and I represent the applicant, East McLellanon Avenue, in connection with this application seeking preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan approval for the proposed project. The proposed project itself is the consideration of three lots which will be reconfigured in order to create seven different lots. Of those seven different lots, we're proposing five new single-family homes, and we're going to keep two existing homes and only be demolishing one home. In addition, for those two lots, they're going to maintain those existing single-family homes, they will be reduced in order to create the proposed five single-family lots. I wanted to say off the onset that we're going to be creating a new right-of-way off of East McLellanon Avenue. In addition, we are agreeing on the record that all proposed single-family homes will be fully conforming, we will not be asking for any bulk variance relief or any other variance relief that would trigger us to go to the zoning board. This will be the full application that's here before you guys tonight. At this time, we are in receipt of the professional reports from this municipality, Beacon, including their last revise of July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the planning, engineering report from this municipality's department, last revised June seventeenth, Mot McDonald's water and sewer report dated July twenty-fourth, and Livingston Environmental Commission dated April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Also on the record, I can say that we have reviewed all their conditions of approval, and we will agree to meet those conditions. In addition, I've also had the opportunity to speak with this board's engineer, Rocco Marucci, about some of the conditions of approval, and I just want to highlight three of them in particular. Number one, he had said that he would strongly recommend that we do downstream tests and also TV just to make sure the sewer and water lines are adequate for the proposed capacity. In the event that we do have an issue, that would be our onus to alleviate that issue, so we will agree on the record to in fact do both tests for both utility lines. We will also agree to do the HOA for any proposed improvements related to stormwater to make sure that it is maintained and managed by an HOA. And last but not least, I also just want to make note that as of right now for our stormwater improvement itself, there is an easement right behind the proposed project that is a public easement. We're proposing here tonight to do a manhole in order to connect for our water to flow into that easement itself. With that being said, before doing any type of connection or improvements, we will also test that pipe to determine whether or not it has the capacity for the additional drainage. If it does not, you'll hear tonight from my engineer that we do have a proposal to redistribute that runoff all within the subject properties and still meet our state statute standards. So essentially, it will be up to the board as to which option that we end up pursuing. With that being said, I'm going to have only two witnesses here tonight. I know that this seems short for only two witnesses, but at the same time, too, I do believe that especially a testimony from my engineer will be voluminous. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce him. This is Dan Chanel from Dynamic Engineering. Rich, do you want to swear him in, or you want me to qualify him first?
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, give us your full name, please, and spell your last name.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Daniel Chanel, last name is S.E.H.N.A.L. I am a principal of the firm Dynamic Engineering located at two forty-five Main Street, Chester, New Jersey. And Dan, can you please provide to this board whether or not your license is still in good standing, and then also just name three boards where you've appeared before in the past and testify it as a qualified engineer? Absolutely. My license is valid and in good standing. I'm licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as several other states. I have previously been accepted before this board in the past, I believe that was back in two thousand and nineteen for the Cryoport application on Industrial Parkway, but I've testified well over two hundred times amongst various different boards throughout the state. Most recently, I've been before South Brunswick, Randolph, and Netcon. Great. This is board accepting as a qualified expert engineer? Great, thank you so very much. So Dan, real quick, is the subject property located in the R four zone? Yes, it is. Have you had an opportunity to review the zoning code and master plan for this proposed project? I have. Excellent. Why don't you walk us through what we're proposing here tonight? Absolutely, my pleasure. First, I just want to present my first exhibit, which I believe I'll set up on the season, I think you'll be able to pick it up on the camera across the room. And this is a colorized exhibit that we had submitted before, so we'll have to enter it in as A one. This actually, what I'm going to start with is our aerial map. This exhibit is a part of the site plan set that was submitted in conjunction with this application. This is sheet two within our site plan set, that was before the board. So this is sheet two entitled Aerial Map. For the purposes of orientation, north is at the bottom of the page in this case. The subject site itself is identified in the central portion of the page, the big red box. And I just want to start by giving you some of the existing conditions, lay of the land around the subject site. So this is identified as Block Seventeen Oh Six, lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, which would be thirty-six, thirty-eight, and forty-two East McLellanon Avenue. Lot number eighteen would be the westernmost lot, so it would be the right-hand side of that red box. Lot eighteen is just under an acre in size, about rectangular in shape. Then the center home, which would be lot nineteen, is also just under an acre in size, again rectangular in shape. And then finally, to the eastern portion or the left-hand side of that red box and the rear portion of that red box, the top of the page, that is lot twenty. It is just over an acre in size, and it's essentially a flag lot. Flag lot meaning that the frontage is very narrow and then it opens up to a large area in the rear portion of the site. In total, this parcel is three acres in size. And then as far as adjacent uses, to the north of the site, which would be the bottom portion of this page, we have East McLellanon Avenue with single-family residential uses beyond. To the south or at the top of the page, we have additional single-family residential uses with Ashwood Drive and the Harrison Elementary School further to the south. To the west, we have single-family residential uses as well as Mansfield Court and North Livingston Avenue with a small commercially-zoned property at the corner of North Livingston Avenue and East McLellanon. And then finally, to the east, we have additional residential uses. So East McLellanon Avenue is a two-lane, two-way roadway with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit under local jurisdiction. And access from those existing residential uses on the site back to East McLellanon Avenue is available via three driveways. Lot number eighteen, the leftmost lot, or the leftmost lot, or I'm sorry, the rightmost lot on this page, has two full movement driveways. Essentially, it's a U-shaped driveway, so there's two driveways along that frontage. Same thing with the center home, again, it's a U-shaped driveway, two full movement accesses back out to East McLellanon Avenue. And then finally, the lot twenty, which is the house on the left-hand portion of the page, is a single full movement driveway. Lot eighteen is currently developed with a paved driveway and a two-story, single-family home, about two thousand square foot footprint, and most of the rear of the site consists of open and wooded space area, and that site contains about eleven percent impervious surface coverage. The center lot, again, just developed with a single-story residential home with a footprint of about thirty-five hundred square foot, and the most of the rear portion of that site is wooded and open space with about twenty percent impervious surface coverage. It is important to note that in this rear lot, the center one, there is a small pocket of what the township would consider steep slopes, so slopes that are greater than essentially one-on-three. These are man-made steep slopes, most likely from the development of that home and kind of flatten out the backyard, and we will be seeking a variance to essentially disturb these steep slope areas. This is about twenty-six hundred square feet in size in total that would be disturbed and seeking the variance for the development of this lot. Finally, lot twenty is the final single-family, two-story dwelling, about fifteen hundred square foot footprint. With that lot, there's also a detached garage in the, just to the northeast of that house. That's about eight hundred and thirty square feet in size. The remainder of the site, again, wooded and open space area, about seventeen percent impervious surface coverage for that lot. And again, there's a very small area of steep slopes which adjoins lot twenty-one, which is essentially that corner that's missing out of that red box. There's some small steep slopes that were created when we developed that home, when it was constructed, that again, we would be disturbing and seeking a variance for this evening. Under existing conditions, the site is graded essentially from the north to the south, so this means that stormwater generally flows in a southerly direction to the existing residential uses directly to the south of us. And again, I just want to note that there are no easements on our subject site. However, if you look at the screen right now, you see that blue portion directly to the south of our site, that is an existing township-owned drainage easement. That drainage easement contains a thirty-six inch concrete pipe, and it's used to convey stormwater from the south to a northerly direction to help convey stormwater for the site. Again, you've heard that this site is within the R four residential zoning district where single-family residential uses are permitted use, and I just wanted to touch that there are some existing non-conformities associated with two of the lots. So lot number eighteen, which is the lot on the bottom right-hand corner of this page here, the only existing non-conformity is the habitable floor area. The zone allows just over thirty-two hundred square feet of living space allowed, and this dwelling exceeds that by a couple hundred square feet, it's at thirty-eight hundred square feet. And then lot nineteen has the same existing non-conformity, that's the center lot on this page, as well as two existing bulk non-conformities associated with setbacks. So the township requires a combined side yard setback, so the two sides are required to have thirty feet, whereas under existing conditions, it's at twenty-three point one. So just about seven feet short of what's required for your setbacks. And then finally, the side yard setback, the single side yard setback, which would be the between the two existing dwellings to remain, ten feet is required and only eight feet exists. So that's an existing non-conformity that essentially will not be intensified with this application. So unless there's any questions about existing conditions, what I'll do now is I'll switch over to proposed conditions and discuss our proposed development a little bit this evening.
Just a quick question, the purple area, if you will, at the back, is that where you were going to look for a manhole to see if you could correct that?
Yes, that's correct. That's the existing, yep. So my next exhibit that I'll present this evening has not yet been submitted to the board, so I will mark this exhibit A one with the date. And all this is, is a colorized version of the site plan sheet that was submitted in conjunction with this application. So same as sheet four that's on the screen this evening, however, we just added some color to help.
Is this a colorized sheet four?
Correct. Yes, sir. So it just adds some color to help describe our development a little bit better. Same orientation, you have East McLellanon Avenue to the bottom of the page, which is north, and to the top of the page is south. On the actual exhibit, the dark gray areas are essentially pavement areas, the darker orange colors are the proposed dwellings, and any green space that you see is obviously landscaped area. So under proposed conditions, I want to first mention that we would be demolishing the existing residential improvements associated with lot twenty, which would be the eastern lot on the subject site, and following the demolition, we will then be seeking essentially to realign the existing lot lines and subdivide this lot. So we'd be going from three lots to seven lots. Lot number eighteen, which is the existing lot to the right-hand side of this page, will be reduced from point nine-four acres down to point four-six, essentially trimming some off of the rear wooded portion of that lot. Similarly, with lot number nineteen, that would be reduced from point nine-four acres to just under a half acre, point four-five acres, again trimming some of the rear yard out of that. And then the remaining area would essentially be subdivided into five residential lots, identified as lots twenty-point-oh-one to twenty-point-oh-five. Those lots will range in size from a quarter of an acre to just under a half an acre. The largest is point four-four, and the smallest is exactly a quarter acre. And then finally, the remaining area would be utilized to construct or propose a right-of-way. This right-of-way would be forty-four feet in width, and it would essentially be proposed to include this proposed cul-de-sac roadway that we're proposing with our development. And that right-of-way is about point four-one acres in size. The roadway itself will be a paved cul-de-sac, it'll have a twenty-four-foot wide travelway or paved area in the center with a fifty, or a fifty, I'm sorry, a forty-foot radius cul-de-sac to the, I guess, southern portion of the proposed development. It's important to note that we will be seeking a variance from the municipality for the size of that bulb or that radius at the end. The township requires a fifty-foot radius, we're proposing a forty-foot radius. Again, it's important to note that that forty-foot radius does comply with RSIS standards, it just doesn't comply with the township requirement of a fifty-foot radius. And the reason we did that was just to make sure that we had sizable lots for these residential dwellings while still being able to maintain full turning movements for the township's fire truck, garbage truck, to be able to turn around there without doing any type of crazy K-turns.
Cul-de-sac bulb size is what RSIS requires?
Yes, that's correct. RSIS requires forty, we're looking at the township requires fifty. However, we are seeking a variance from RSIS standards for the width of the cul-de-sac or of the right-of-way. RSIS requires a fifty-foot right-of-way width, we're proposing forty-four feet at the frontage of the site. Can we accommodate fifty? We can. However, speaking with your board engineer, which I'll get to shortly, we are proposing two retaining walls on either side of this roadway that enters the site, and I'll explain those further shortly, but the township does not want to be responsible for maintaining those retaining walls. So rather than keeping them within the right-of-way, we shrunk that right-of-way down a little bit so that the retaining walls would be outside of the right-of-way, which resulted in the right-of-way width being squeezed down to forty-four feet versus what RSIS requires, which would be fifty. But fifty-foot would again fit, but we wanted to make sure that we would be responsible to maintain those walls versus the township.
And that's the right-of-way versus the cartway, right? What's the cartway?
Correct. The cartway width is twenty-four feet. That, so again, with the exception of the right-of-way width itself, this cul-de-sac does comply with RSIS and meets the definition of a major collector for low intensity. So this means that it's a twenty-four-foot wide cartway, but we are proposing no parking on either side of that right-of-way. So we'll have no parking signs, we won't want to park there, so you could still get full access with the fire truck, the garbage truck around that street. Also important to note that we're proposing twenty-five-foot radiuses back out to McLellanon Avenue, so essentially those curb returns, those comply with RSIS, and we do have sightlines that are shown on this plan. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but we did confirm that we have clear and adequate sightlines from either direction of East McLellanon Avenue, so it does promote safe turning movements out of that roadway. Again, it's designed to accommodate Livingston's trash truck and fire truck. There'll be a four-foot wide sidewalk that essentially starts on the western or right-hand side of the cul-de-sac and then wraps around that bulb and ends at the proposed lot twenty-point-oh-one, which is the northeasternmost proposed lot of this development. This will be curbed, obviously, with Belgium block curbing and would include street lighting. Now, we are seeking two bulk variances, which primarily are due because of the proposed location of this cul-de-sac or right-of-way that we are including. And the proposed bulk variances are not associated with any of the proposed dwellings, they're only associated with lot number nineteen, which is that center lot. So the minimum principal building setback for when you're dealing with the side street, so now where we're adding this street, the existing side yard of lot nineteen technically becomes a front yard. So the township requires a thirty-five-foot setback from the right-of-way line to essentially the side of the dwelling on lot nineteen, whereas we are proposing fourteen-point-nine. Fifteen-point-one exists between the existing lot line and that house, and we're shrinking it down to fourteen-point-nine to get the right-of-way and roadway in there. In addition to that, your planner essentially identified a variance for proposed lot nineteen, which would be on the western side of that center dwelling, because they are now considering that side yard to now be a rear yard. Since you have a front yard from this proposed right-of-way, now they are considering the rear yard, which would be the western side of that property, as the rear yard versus the side yard. The township requires thirty-five feet where there is eight feet currently existing. That's not shown on our plan because instead, we identified the rear yard as the back because, again, the frontage of this house, front on East McLellanon, so we were seeing it as essentially two existing side yards and the rear yard in the back to remain. However, your planner felt that, you know, reading the township code, that essentially should be reversed, now that we have two front yards, we should have two rears as well. So either way that you skin it, we would essentially be required for a variance for that existing improvements on lot nineteen because of the addition of this cul-de-sac. But again, no changes essentially to the set or the location of the building on lot nineteen, essentially looks the same from the frontage, we're just sneaking that roadway in from the existing lot twenty, and as a result of that, we are essentially resulting in two new variances.
Before you, sorry, before you move on from that, from what I understood, before you're shrinking the size of both lot nineteen and eighteen and taking that into the area that you're going to be building the new?
Yes, sir.
And there were certain, non-conditional uses that were there before that were approved, but do they now change and are variances now required for those because you're changing the rear lot line?
My understanding is there isn't. The only variances that we've identified were these two new bulk variances that I noted based upon the setback of that lot nineteen dwelling.
Okay.
So the lot size still conforms, the coverage requirement still conform, it's just those setbacks now that get impacted because the side becomes a front yard. Yes, it's still our understanding, just to clarify, is that the modified lot nineteen is going to trigger the C-bulk variances. In addition, we'll also need relief from the steep slopes as well. Noted in the planner's report, asked whether or not it was going to be a decorative wall or retaining wall. If it's a retaining wall, which you just described, it would require relief, so we don't need that C-bulk variance relief. And since we're on the topic of C-bulk variance relief, I just want to bring up to the board that when my engineer discussed the relief regarding variance relief for the right-of-way, that relief itself is design waivers, it is not C-bulk variances. Correct, it is a retaining wall. And I'll touch on that a little bit more in detail shortly.
Could I just ask, what did you say the front yard setback is proposed at?
So the, I believe the way it's defined in the code is the principal side street setback, thirty-five feet is required, we're proposing fourteen-point-nine.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to note that there is no modifications proposed to the existing dwellings on lots eighteen and nineteen. The only minor modification to lot nineteen is just a reconfiguration of the driveway on lot nineteen because the existing driveway would extend out partially into the proposed cul-de-sac, so we're realigning that U-shaped driveway to make sure that we provide separation and it's two separate driveways from the proposed cul-de-sac. All of the proposed dwellings, as Mr. Passata mentioned, would be conforming as far as the size of them and the location within the building envelope. We do not have formal architectural plans at the moment, but should your board act favorably on this application, obviously, an architect would be, provide formal architectural drawings that would be required for building permits, and they would comply with the bulk standards for the size and location of these dwellings.
So the single-family rendering that was in the packet was?
An example.
An example.
Yep.
They had a roof height of thirty-three feet?
I think it was thirty-three and a half. Correct. Thirty-five is what's permitted, and we would not exceed that. Right. And given the fact that this application requires C-bulk variance relief, as this board knows, you absolutely have the jurisdiction to have conditions which would limit the proposed improvement sizes, so we're conceding to that. As far as other improvements that we're proposing, each one of these five new dwellings would be provided with a driveway. The driveways at the curb line would be twelve feet in width, and then as you would get up towards the house where we're proposing two-car garages, this would then widen into twenty feet in width, which would comply with RSIS standards for a dwelling to have up to four bedrooms. So we'd provide enough parking at each lot for up to a four-bedroom house, and that would be two-car garage plus space in the driveway for two to three vehicles. All of these improvements that we're proposing tonight do result in the increase of impervious surface coverage of just over nineteen thousand square feet. However, we are proposing a stormwater management system to mitigate these impacts and also reduce the rates of discharge when we compare to existing conditions. We are proposing an easement, we are proposing a twenty-five-foot-wide drainage easement along the rear of the properties. You can see that shaded going around the rear of the five dwellings that we proposed, as well as a twenty-foot-wide easement between lots twenty-point-oh-five, which is the, I believe it's twenty-point-oh-five, which is the northwesternmost lot, and twenty-point-oh-four, which is the lot that's in the western corner. And that would be essentially for some of our drainage improvements, which I'll touch on shortly. Again, we're grading the site to essentially maintain the existing grading patterns that exist currently. In order to accomplish that, we are proposing three retaining walls. There will be two retaining walls alongside of the cul-de-sac as you enter the cul-de-sac. They will be, again, located outside of the right-of-way, they will not be decorative, they will be retaining walls. The western retaining wall, which would be the right-hand side of this page, would be a wall with a maximum height of only two feet, and the roadway, the proposed roadway would be on the high side of that wall, and then on the opposite side of the roadway, the eastern wall would have a five-foot maximum height, and the road would be on the low side of that wall. And then finally, we are also proposing a retaining wall associated with lot twenty-point-oh-five, which is essentially just to the rear of existing lot eighteen. That wall will be eight feet at its maximum elevation. The existing backyard of lot nineteen would be on the high side of that wall, and proposed dwelling on twenty-point-oh-five would be on the low side. And again, that is just so we don't disturb the existing rear yard of lot number eighteen to essentially maintain those trees and the grading back there, but to accommodate the new dwelling that we propose.
Can you just hold back a second on the height above ground of the retaining walls? What's the maximum height that will be above ground?
So the highest wall that we propose will be eight feet at its highest point, and that would be lot twenty-point-oh-five. So that is the proposed dwelling that is directly to the rear of lot number eighteen, existing dwelling eighteen. Eighteen will be on the high side.
And that will have an eight-foot-high exposed?
Yes, it'll be exposed to the new dwelling, which would be lot 20.05. Lot 18, which fronts on East McClellan Avenue, would be on the high side. So essentially, the proposed dwelling behind would be on the low side. So that would be below the backyard.
And on the low side, it's how, what height?
Eight feet.
Eight feet on the high side, but on the?
Well, it's flush on one side.
Flush on one side.
Yep, so then you drop down, so you have lot 18 up top, and then it drops down eight feet to get to the proposed dwelling, which is 20.05.
Concern, obviously, is that somebody walking over there comes onto a wall that's eight-foot-high on the other side and goes down eight feet. Doing anything with regard to fencing?
Yep, so lot, existing lot 18 will have a proposed six-foot-high vinyl fence along the rear property line, and that essentially runs concurrently with the top of that wall, so the wall would be protected. And then along east, or the proposed cul-de-sac, there's a real short wall that's only two feet high along existing lot 19. Same thing, there'll be a fence along that, it's only a two-foot wall, and then a five-foot wall along the existing lot 21, which is not a part of this application, but they have an existing fence and a tree line there that's very dense that would protect anybody from going over the top of that wall as well.
So just on that wall, the wall exists to the side of the new lot behind 18, or does it wrap around to the Mansfield courtside?
So I'll show you on the screen, the proposed wall is right here, it's this line.
So it's not, has nothing to do with the drainage, the underground drainage system in the backyard?
It's strictly just to maintain the existing grading for the rear yard of lot 18.
I think our ordinance may require some sort of fencing on top of the retaining wall.
Well, essentially, the rear yard, the rear lot line for existing lot 18 will have a fence, and that's set, I'd say about two feet from the top of the wall. We could shift that wall further. We'll absolutely comply with that.
If I may recall, I believe it might actually require a four-foot fence on top of the retaining wall? Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
And we have a six-foot fence, so we'll make sure we comply with that.
Okay.
As far as bulk standards, I just want to make sure that you understand, all of these proposed lots, those five dwellings, will completely comply with all of the township bulk standards, so we're not seeking any variances for the new lots that we are proposing. The only bulk variances are for that lot number 18. We do comply, again, with the parking requirement for RSIS. For a four-bedroom house, we're required to have 3.5, I know it sounds funny, but 3.5 parking spaces per dwelling, and we have, I'm sorry, 2.5 spaces, and we have what RSIS would consider 3.5 parking spaces in each one of those driveways and garages, so we do comply.
And just for clarification, the bulk variances are for lot 19, not 18, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We did take a quick look at the Institution of Transportation Engineers' trip generation for a residential development of this size, because I know a lot of people are always concerned with traffic. But for a development of this size, at the morning peak hour, so the very peak hour of proposed trips, we're only looking at five trips in total. So that would be in and out of this proposed cul-de-sac, five trips. The PM peak hour, so in the afternoon, we're looking at six trips. So six cars making turns in and out of the proposed cul-de-sac. But if we want to look at the weekday 24-hour period, we're only looking at 64 total trips. And then the Saturday 24-hour would be 47 trips. It's important to note that the New Jersey Department of Transportation would consider a significant increase of traps, or trips or traffic, would be 100 or more trips in the peak hour. We're only proposing six trips in the peak hour, so less than 10% of what the DOT would be considered a significant increase in traffic. So definitely no proposed traffic impact in this case. Moving on to everyone's favorite topic would be stormwater management. So this site does meet the definition of a major development, because we're disturbing more than an acre. So we've designed a stormwater management system to comply with both local and state standards. In order to do that, we essentially look at three main things. We look at stormwater quantity, quality, and what's known as groundwater recharge. And essentially, what we do is we start by looking at the existing conditions, we figure out where the existing stormwater is going, and we quantify to figure out how much stormwater is leaving the site under existing conditions. And then essentially, we apply the same test to proposed conditions. We figure out how much stormwater is going to be generated by the new improvements, and then we essentially have to design a system to capture that stormwater, treat it, detain it, and release it at a slower rate. So in order to do this, we are essentially proposing a series of underground infiltration basins, which essentially would be a series of 36-inch perforated pipes, and that would be located within the proposed easement that essentially wraps around the rear yards of our proposed development. So you can see on the screen here, those gray lines are essentially our underground detention systems. And what that will do is we'll collect the stormwater, it will detain it, it will infiltrate some of it back into the ground, and then larger storm events, it would release at a controlled rate. It's also important to note that we are capturing all of the stormwater that is generated by the driveways and the proposed roadway by a series of inlets. That stormwater would then be conveyed to what's known as a manufactured treatment device, which is located between proposed lots 20.05 and 20.04. It's essentially a concrete box that has a tree growing in it. And what takes place is the stormwater generated by the roadway is collected, and then it is conveyed to this box that has a tree and soil in it. The stormwater then seeps or percolates through the soil that's in there, it gets cleaned by that soil, and then it's collected by a drain that's below the soil, and then it further gets conveyed into our stormwater detention system in the rear portion of those lots. Again, those are perforated pipes, so some of the stormwater will be infiltrated back into the ground, so it's not even leaving the site, it's going back into the soil. And then for larger storm events, it will be released at a slower rate than it does under existing conditions to the proposed manhole that we are proposing in that purple existing drainage easement to the south of our parcel.
Are you also going to be able to collect and put into there the stormwater coming from the houses?
We are, yep.
So that's all going into the same?
Absolutely. So the stormwater generated by the roof areas will be collected by roof leaders and conveyed directly to those basins. The landscape areas would essentially sheet-flow and be collected by a series of inlets to go into those basins. And then again, the stormwater that's generated by the road and the driveways would be collected by a series of grates in the roadway, conveyed to that treatment device, and then sent to that detention system. So under the state and local requirements, we need to design for the 210 and 100-year storm events. And what we have to do is we have to look at how much, how quickly that water is leaving the site under existing conditions, and then under proposed conditions, we need to reduce that rate. So under proposed conditions, stormwater is going to be leaving the site slower than it currently does. For example, the two-year storm, we have to reduce that rate by 50% of the existing. So under proposed conditions, the stormwater has to leave the site essentially 50% slower than it does under existing conditions. We're reducing that all the way down to 27% of the existing runoff rate. We're only required to reduce it to 50, we're going all the way down to 27%. So we're not even, we're not only meeting the requirements, we're exceeding them. And it's the same case for the 10 and the 100-year storm event. The biggest storm event, which would be the 100-year storm event, we're required to reduce it to 80% of those existing numbers, we're reducing it all the way down to 69. So again, we are exceeding what is required by local and state requirements for this development. So it's my professional opinion that post-development, that the stormwater that's generated by the site under existing conditions will have a less of an impact to the surrounding area under proposed conditions due to the stormwater management system that we're implementing. And again, all this will be underground, so you're not going to see a big basin, it's not going to be a pond full of water. It's essentially going to be captured underground, infiltrated back into the ground, or released at a slower rate back to that same drainage easement to be conveyed off-site. So it'll be a less of an impact to the surrounding areas. That would be the requirement of the HOA that would be set up for this. They would be required to maintain, it wouldn't be the township's requirement. And it's also important to note that we'd be required to prepare an operations and maintenance manual that would be deeded to this property. It would tie, be tied to the property, run with the deed of the property, so the stormwater system would be required to be maintained for the life of this development.
Dan, just a few questions for you.
Of course.
Today, for the existing conditions, are there any proposed stormwater improvements and/or management systems on the subject sites?
There is not. The stormwater flow is completely undetained to the south.
To the south. And just for clarification, again, you said the north is what fronts McClellan Avenue, and the south is residential, single-family homes?
That is correct.
So would it be fair to say that they're burdened by the stormwater runoff today?
That is correct.
And in your estimate, what type of reduction would they be seeing if in fact we were to get approved tonight and propose and develop the proposed stormwater management system?
Yeah, it's a significant reduction. Again, we're exceeding what's required by state and local levels. The two-year ceiling, we're reducing it all the way to 20%, 27% of what exists today. And the largest storm we need to design to, we're reducing it to about 70% of what they see today, whereas only 80 is required.
So despite the increase in impervious coverage of about 19,000 square feet, we are actually reducing the stormwater runoff in the adjacent parcels?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Sticking with the theme of utilities? Sure thing. Yes, it is considered a subsurface infiltration basin, which is green infrastructure per the New Jersey regulations.
And I keep forgetting to put my mic on. And are there other stormwater treatment facilities on the site that are, you know, more or less traditional swales, rain gardens, et cetera, to supplement the underground storage?
The only other item that might be new to residents would be that manufactured treatment device, which, for lack of a better term, we call a tree in a box, because it essentially has a tree growing out of a concrete box that has that soil media in it that filters the stormwater that's generated by the roadway. So that, again, is considered by the DEP to be green infrastructure, because it treats the dirty water, cleans it before it's discharged off the site. But there's no other type of swales or rain gardens or anything proposed, just those subsurface infiltration bases.
And let's say over time, the underground system becomes, you know, blocked or congealed, that then becomes the obligation of the homeowners association?
Yes, it does.
And if they don't have the money to fix it, what happens?
Then there would be a lien placed on the properties.
So the town can go in, fix it, and charge back to the?
Yes. Absolutely. So just touching on utilities, we've received willingness to serve letters from the township for water and sewer, showing that there is what's anticipated to be adequate capacity for both water and sanitary sewer. We've also received willingness to serve letters from PSENG for gas and electric, noting that they could provide service to these new dwellings. As far as water, we will be proposing an eight-inch water main extension down this proposed cul-de-sac. We have spoken with your township's fire official, he's accepted the design. We're also proposing two fire hydrants, one right at the intersection of East McClellan and the proposed cul-de-sac, as well as a fire hydrant at the very tip of that cul-de-sac. Additionally, sanitary sewer would essentially be accomplished by a force main, so we would be pumping the sanitary sewer that would be generated by these dwellings to a manhole essentially at the entrance of our proposed cul-de-sac, and at that point, it then becomes gravity-fed back to the municipal system. And as Mr. Passata mentioned earlier, we have agreed to video-inspect the existing sanitary sewer, make sure that there is adequate capacity, make sure the lines are in good shape to, in order to collect our flow. Both water and sewer, we will need to submit to the DEP for TWA approval as well as BWSE approval due to the main extensions for both water and sewer, which we will absolutely do as a condition of a favorable approval by your board. And gas and electric service would be underground down this right-of-way as well, providing service to each one of these dwellings.
Can we just back up to the sanitary?
Absolutely.
So it's going to be a force main where you're pumping it up to a point that it's going to then take it out?
Yes.
And is that each house, or is that going to be?
A pump station?
A little bit, yeah, there's a pump station that they're all going into?
No, each home would essentially have an ejector pump, a small pump for each dwelling that they would be responsible for, that would then pump it to that gravity manhole. And this was discussed with?
One of the questions that was raised 150 years ago at the track meeting was that if we lose power, you've got five houses that don't have sewer. That's an issue. And I think we had talked about it, perhaps at that time, there may have not been individual houses, or you were going to put it in one place and then pump it out, but the potential for a generator to maintain those pumps if in fact power goes out, so that the sanitary in those houses can be used.
Yes, we can agree on the record to propose the generators in the event of a stormwater surge.
Okay.
As far as lighting, as I mentioned, this proposed cul-de-sac would have lighting within the right-of-way. Essentially, it would be 11 pole-mounted LED decorative-style lights that would comply with the request of your board professionals for the style and type of light. It would be very low-intensity lighting, just, you know, to essentially match what you would see in a typical residential neighborhood. Just enough to provide adequate lighting for safety within this cul-de-sac. Would be, you know, warm in color, not super bright or anything like that. Only about .4-foot candles, which does comply with IES standards for residential lighting. And then final landscaping, each one of these dwellings, when they're constructed, obviously would have a typical residential-style landscape design. However, for the purposes of our presentation this evening, we did provide a landscaping plan to show how essentially we would buffer these uses along the proposed stormwater easement. So we are removing a, an area of wooded area of trees, one compared to existing conditions, but we are planting about 112 new trees, both evergreen and deciduous, to help buffer this proposed development, as well as provide some visual interest and soften the hard lines. We'll absolutely have to comply with the township requirements for tree replacement. When and if the board votes favorably on this application, we would hire a tree expert to identify all these trees, quantify them, figure out what that tree replacement quantity would be. And if we couldn't meet the tree replacement on-site, we would obviously pay into the township's a tree fund in order to meet that requirement. But we did propose to do some evergreen trees to both buffer the existing lot number 19, as you see on this plan in front of you, as well as the surrounding residential uses as well.
So just to clarify, we are proposing landscaping and fencing to create that screening?
That is correct, and you're right, I failed to mention, along the existing boundary of the site, for these five new dwellings, we will have a solid six-foot-high vinyl fence that essentially follows the property line to help, again, buffer or screen this proposed use.
And just going back real quick to utility companies, have you submitted and received will serve letters?
We have.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
As Mr. Passata mentioned, we did receive and review the review letters generated by your professionals, and we are prepared to comply with those requests. We've submitted to the Essex County Planning Board, where we received essentially a waiver, because they do not have jurisdiction over this application, with the exception to the subdivision. We'll absolutely file a formal subdivision plat if the board votes favorably on this application. And we've also submitted to the Soil Conservation District, where we've received some minor comments, which we anticipate we will address and ultimately receive their certification. So essentially, in closing, we did look at numerous sites or layouts for this site, and we found that the current proposal employs safe and responsible engineering practices by taking into account the unique geometry of this lot and the surrounding uses, providing an environmentally responsible design, it's safe and efficient circulation for pedestrians and motor vehicles. We're employing those green infrastructure techniques to address stormwater management, which produces a, or proposes a reduced impact on the surrounding properties when we compare it to the existing conditions, and again, it complies with the local and state regulations. So if your board, you know, votes favorably on this application, we feel like it would, it would fit very well with the surrounding community and essentially complement those existing uses that are in the neighborhood. Mr. Passata, if I missed anything, feel free to correct.
Yeah, just one quick question. Can you just walk us through real quick what, hypothetically speaking, if the board were to find in our favor, what the construction phasing would be?
Yep, absolutely. So the first thing that we were required to construct is that cul-de-sac, that right-of-way. That would need to be put into place first before the dwellings would go in. So that cul-de-sac would go first, and then the construction of those five new buildings can take place after that. It would be the cul-de-sac and the stormwater management, that's the first piece, and then the homes would go in after that.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I have, just for a point of clarification, I know that the engineer's memo of June 17th has a lot of comments on that, some of them that have been corrected and some of them that have not been. And I, just to verify what you had said, is that you're going, and without going through these one at a time, which would take us the rest of the week, you are going to comply with all of the items listed by the engineer on these, on the June 17th revision?
Yes, sir. And I'm sure we'll hear from him, but if he has any specific questions, I'm more than happy to address.
I have a couple. So just looking at this, I think, it seems like as you approach the cul-de-sac, where the first house, you're at like elevation 301, and then back by the rear of the property, you're at 300, 299? the property, you're at three hundred, two ninety-nine?
Correct.
So it's eleven or twelve feet from beginning of the new property to the end of it?
Yes, sir.
And the system you've designed, you feel can cover that pitch?
The stormwater system?
Yes, the stormwater.
Yes, yes, okay.
And you mentioned in the testimony, it's nineteen thousand square feet of new pervious?
Yes.
So that's well less than half an acre.
Yeah, correct. It's just?
And that includes the road, the driveways, and the home?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just mentioning, yeah, it was just under half an acre of pervious surface.
And then, just to clarify, there is no bulk variances for the five new homes?
Correct. That is correct.
Only bulk variances are lot nineteen?
Yes.
Correct. And there is no intention to submit for a D-variance, so it goes to the zoning board?
We're going to get to that.
With the FAA?
We'll wait for Mr. Takina.
Gotcha. Any other questions from the board? Rocco, you have questions, comments, or either my, our professionals?
Couple of questions. Some of them were already answered. You agreed to downstream study the connection to the sewers, CCTV, I'm talking about stormwater.
We'll do that.
Sanitary is separate, water and sewer, that's separate. You'll deal with water and sewer and connections with, you know, TWA and BWC permits, but stormwater, you'll CCTV, downstream study it, then as far as connecting to it, it's on private property, so there would have to be some type of agreement with those property owners to connect.
Yes, that's correct. If we would be able to connect on any one of the proposed part, any one of the existing residential parcels behind the subject property itself, we would more than likely offer a license agreement, so this way they can have all the restrictions and covenants that they would want to see, and being that it's a license agreement, unlike easement or construction easement, as you'd say, it is revocable. So if at any point in time we were to exceed it, they can kick us right off. So you have complete control.
Okay, just because we don't own the property, that's why I'm mentioning that, so. And then, generators, each house would have a generator? Is that what we're talking about? Because each house has its own package ejector pump?
We can, we'd have to do a pump station instead, versus having individual?
Each proposed single-family home will have a generator itself.
And then, the other thing you already mentioned was obviously there's going to be an HOA that would manage everything and own the drainage system. This force main itself would also be part of that HOA?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, because the force main, the sewer department does not own and maintain force mains?
Correct. Once it gets to that manhole and then becomes gravity-fed, that would then be?
Okay, and then obviously that force main was, it's within the public right-of-way, so there'll be some type of blanket agreement within that HOA that you would maintain that?
Yeah, so it would be our responsibility.
Okay. I think a lot of other stuff obviously was discussed and talked about, so other than that, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Passata, do you know, does that require a DCA approval, a five-lot or eight-lot?
No, we would have to submit for a waiver, because it's under a hundred.
So if the systems, either the sewer or the drain system, fail, right, it would probably be down the road a little, is there a game plan that there would be reserves established as part of the HOA, or is it just going to, as it dies?
Yes, similar to the application that I had presented before the board, and you guys found the affirmative green terrace, we had created an HOA system where there would be a reservation of funding in the event that there would be some type of inadequate servicing, right, that required the township to come into the property, where the township does have the right to access, whether it's in an emergency or because the individuals themselves are not holding up their end to the HOA itself. So we would have the same situation here, where there would be a reserve fund, and in the event that it is depleted, then the municipality would still be allowed to come into the property, fix the issue, and then attach a lien on all the parcels.
Right, but if working properly, the HOA would bring the professionals in, fix the system, and they would pay them and the town would then?
Have nothing to do with that, correct?
And how do we know, or how would the developer, what the reserve should look like? If the DCA is not reviewing and approving the budget?
Right.
How do you get there?
Well, part of the process itself is would require myself to draft the HOA agreement and the master deed, and then send it over to both the board attorney and the board's engineer for their review. So I guess we'd be subject to the township's reasonable estimate of what that reserve funding should be.
That sounds fair.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. On the cul-de-sac entrance from Colin Avenue, I just want to review the lot line configuration real fast. Along the proposed cul-de-sac, I want to review the lot line configuration real quickly. I believe there's about a five-foot strip of land that will relate to, I'm sorry, I don't have the proposed lot number?
Twenty-one eleven.
Twenty-one eleven, that will continue along the cul-de-sac. And I think the purpose of that is to ensure that the retaining wall is not within the township's jurisdiction, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And is there, is there a reason why that area, the land that is within the right-of-way, cannot host street trees in that area, or can't host some landscaping, both for beautification, but also to help screen the retaining wall?
We can absolutely propose that.
I would defer to the board if that seems appropriate?
Where are we talking about that?
This is along the cul-de-sac, along the east side of it, on the left side, as shown on the screen.
So Rocco, isn't there an order that requires street trees every so often? There are lots to do, so?
Yeah, can, if you go to the, can't see on all sides.
They have a total of six, I think, six street trees, but they're all located proximate to the new homes.
Those circles essentially along the sidewalk are proposed street trees, but I believe she's mentioning this strip here, we can absolutely add some of that portion.
Is there a sidewalk?
No sidewalk, the sidewalk wraps around the opposite side.
Yep.
The plan on the package?
And then my other question was, you had submitted a sightline exhibit that I think was intending to show the visibility or lack thereof of the proposal, and one of the questions in the planner's memo was about the age and maturity of those trees. I was hoping you could give some detail on that?
The proposed?
I showed on the sightline exhibit, is that what, is that a tree height in twenty years from now, or a tree height in five years after planting?
Yes, so I guess it's a good time to pull up their exhibit, which was not on board of the site line application, so I would like to identify this as exhibit eight-two.
Great, with today's date?
We have that for the screening by exhibit?
I think we did submit this. This is entitled, "Profile Exhibit with Phase Date, August eighth, 2024." And essentially what this shows is three profile cuts, essentially where you see these yellow lines on the sightline exhibit is corresponding to these vertical profile cuts, essentially slices through the site, that would show the existing, so profile AA would be the very, this is lot, proposed lot twenty-point-oh-one, this would be existing home on lot twenty-one, and this would be our proposed dwelling on lot twenty-point-zero-one, and it essentially shows what the view would be if you take essentially a slice through the site. The bold black line is the proposed property line. As you can see, we would be on the low side of the existing retaining wall associated with lot twenty-one, and what you see here is the proposed plant. There's two different heights, it's a little difficult to see, you see it proved in, when they'll be planted, it'll be the small tree toward my finger is, and essentially at maturity, which yes, would be about, you know, fifteen years, it would be well above the height of the house. But when those plants are planted, they're usually planted at a height of about eight feet, seven to eight feet, and for the first five to eight years, they typically grow about eighteen to twenty-four inches a year to essentially provide a buffer. But as they grow to maturity, they would essentially provide a full screen in the future for those proposed lawns.
And the maturity is between thirty to fifty feet?
That is correct.
These are what, arborvital green giants?
Arborvital green giants and Norway spruce are the evergreen.
Can you show us again real quickly where those trees are going?
So if you zoom out on the screen, you can see?
Oh, we got that now.
See this yellow line? That's essentially this view, so this would be in between the existing lot twenty-one and the proposed lot twenty-point-zero-one. And those other yellow lines are essentially the corresponding profile views. Lost our technology. For each one of those section cuts.
Thank you, that's all.
Any questions from members of the public or just witness ask to his testimony?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lipowski. I live at?
Can you spell that?
L-I-P-O-W-S-K-I. I live at twenty-five Ashwood, which is lot forty, block seventeen-oh-six, which backs up to the proposed development area. And my property is one that is mentioned in a lot of the documents that I've read, where the manhole will be installed. I have not been contacted about this at all, or other than reading in the documents. I would like to know the intentions, the specifics, and all of the details, that how my property will be affected by this, my yard, fence, plants, everything. Additionally, my other question is with regards to the existing trees on the property that you're developing. There are a lot of old trees back there. Are all of those trees going to be removed, or are any of them going to be remaining?
Sure, so I'll answer the first question regarding what's going to happen with your property. The reason why we haven't reached out to you yet, as I stated before in my opening statement, we do not know exactly what the proposed manhole is going to be. We're proposing right now for it to be lot forty on your lot itself, which I understand that we would have to get your permission, mostly by license agreements, so you would have all discretion and power. With that being said, if that were not to work out, we also have the ability to relocate that manhole onto other residential parcels. So that's why we haven't started the dialogue. But hypothetically speaking, let's say if all three parcels said, no, we're not going to allow you to access this public easement, we can redistribute the water on-site itself so that we didn't have to tap into the easement. But with that being said, if we were to get your permission, and you found the affirmative to allow us to tap in on that manhole, why don't you walk through what that would look like, and what we would do to make sure she's made whole?
Yep, absolutely.
Before you do that, Jack, can we get the overhead of the?
To the area?
Just one more sheet back, it would be sheet two, there you go.
Harder to read than I thought. Do we know which house this is?
Do we know which house? Yeah.
It's the middle?
Right there, in the middle. We see the little black blocks right there?
Yep.
That's it.
Go back a little, Jack.
It's hard to see that, that black?
Right there. Nope, go back.
This black box that kind of shuts out in the center of the page at the top, that's essentially where that manhole connection would be. There's an existing thirty-six-inch concrete pipe below ground there that conveys the township's stormwater. We would essentially propose to excavate down to that pipe, and we would place a manhole on top of it, where our pipe from our drainage system would come from our property and tie into that manhole. The disturbance, obviously, would result in a removal of a portion of the fence to install that manhole, obviously disturbing the existing lawn area that's back there. But it would be restored to the point where you would just see the manhole cover. It would be at grade, there's not a structure above the grade protruding from the grade other than just the manhole flush of the grade, and obviously, we would restore the landscaping and the fence to the homeowner's liking.
And that manhole, the responsibility would be the responsibility of the HOA, correct?
That's correct. We would have to maintain that with our operations and maintenance manual.
And hypothetically speaking, we could, if we wanted to relocate the proposed manhole on the other two parcels, either work?
Yep, it would still work, correct.
Okay, and then real quick, can you just walk us through what the proposal?
Wait one second, one second. So that pink area is an existing stormwater?
Township of living stints.
Correct.
Got it.
And then, I had mentioned before that in the event we couldn't tap in for plethora of reasons?
Yep.
You had stated earlier that we could redistribute the water. Can you walk us through exactly what you mean by that?
Yep, absolutely. It's not a preferred option, however, we would have the option to essentially pump our stormwater after it was released from our basin at a, you know, controlled rate, back to the surface and allow it to sheet flow off our property to essentially match the existing drainage patterns as it does today. As I mentioned previously in my testimony, under existing conditions, all the stormwater just sheet flows undetained to the south and to those homes, where you propose to collect it and then pipe it directly to that underground system. However, if we can't accomplish that somehow, we would still be detaining and releasing that stormwater at a slower rate, but we would essentially pump it back up to grade level and disperse it back towards the south into those dwellings as it goes today. But again, it would be less stormwater at a slower rate than it currently does.
And that proposal also would meet the state amenable standards?
It would.
Correct.
Can I just add that that area today floods terribly? And I understand you're trying, you're going to be reducing that water, but that was not always the case. It has gotten progressively worse over the years with the increased home capacity and development, to the point that any mildly heavy rain causes a complete flood in my yard and my, down my driveway. So I'm highly concerned that this will make it a hundred times worse. Terrible. It's a flood. It's a flood. And additionally, I will also add that on Ashwood, in recent years, Ashwood has flooded terribly, to the point that the manhole that's at the intersection of Ashwood and Longacre, ever since I believe it's Scott Drive, was built off of McClellan further up, that has a similar detention area to what this is proposed, I believe. That manhole, with any bit of rain, water pours out of the manhole, and it's been reported to the town and nothing's been done, it just pours upward out of the manhole. So it's not a good situation.
If I may ask real quick, how often does it flood onto Ashwood? A year?
My yard or the manhole?
Yes, both.
Every, my yard, with any rain other than a drizzle?
Okay.
The water pools in the backyard, and it actually has started to ruin my driveway because of the water. In the area where you're proposing, where that pipe is and where you're proposing the manhole, Ashwood, the manhole on Ashwood and Longacre, not as often. That's a much heavier rain for a long period of time, but the past five years, I would say, it has increased in frequency.
Now here, I definitely understand your concerns, and it's, you may not agree with what I'm going to say, but it is our requirement, in order to comply with state standards, is we have all that stormwater going to your property now, we're required, under our standards when we develop this, to capture that water and release it slower. So it is my professional opinion that post-development, you'll see an improvement in that, because we're collecting that still.
And I can understand that, however, you're proposing to put five additional houses in an already landlocked area that's surrounded by houses in a town where the infrastructure is stressed already, so I'm not warm and fuzzy about what you're proposing.
If I may, real quick, Dan, would it be fair to say that the storms that she says that she experiences on a regular basin would be like a two-year storm?
Yeah, yep.
We have a, we have a video.
Real quick, this is the first one.
I have pictures, I mean, I've taken pictures over the years of the water flooding.
If I may just have my expert respond to your questions?
Sure.
And then would you say the ones that happen a little more so often, that would be a five-year storm?
Yep, absolutely.
Is your expert who you're proposing today can satisfy that?
Yes.
More importantly, and I hear the public's concerns, their concerns are specifically stating that the existing stormwater management system that's there today is already overburdened. Now, if we were to do, which we've agreed to do on the record, the downstream test with the TV, would we understand whether or not that actually is true?
Absolutely, it would help us gain that understanding. If there's any type of blockages in the pipe, root intrusions, we'd be able to identify that and ultimately help the township rectify that situation.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we have conceded on the record that in the event there's any impediments to the stormwater flow in those pipes, it would be our responsibility, and we would rehabilitate it. So the existing concern, whether it exists or not, would be alleviated by us in fact, if in fact we did find it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. But it's, so wouldn't this be directing, instead of just permeating into now this, you know, lot that doesn't have homes on, now you're directing more of it into the source system?
lot that doesn't have homes on, now you're directing more of it into the source system, and creating more of that going downstream, down, you know, a little bit farther from here, would that exacerbate that problem?
No, technically, what we're required to do is release the stormwater at a slower rate. So in theory, under existing conditions, these stormwater pipes are getting an influx of stormwater when you have an intense stormwater event, and it's all trying to rush to a pipe at a single point. What our stormwater detention system and infiltration system does is some of that water will be infiltrated back into the ground, so that's not leaving the site at all. The larger storm events, the ten- to one-hundred-year storm events, those are being held back in those series of pipes that we propose and released slower. So when you have those real big storm events, when those pipes are first getting overburdened, our stormwater is getting held back on our site. So as the storm dissipates and the stormwater reduces its rates in the existing infrastructure in the township, we are then releasing our stormwater at that point. So at that point, there's more capacity in those existing pipes, because we're holding that stormwater back on our site before we can release it out. So it's intended that the stormwater management requirements in the township and in the state are intended to help correct that situation that you're describing, because we're slowly releasing the stormwater versus just rushing it all into a pipe at one point.
Thank you.
Scott Kusheal, fourteen, Mansfield Court. Sure, K-U-S-H-E-L. So just questions more about the stormwater, because now it's, you've brought up a lot, so now it just makes my concern go even higher, because it's been brought up a lot, knowing that it's happening here. Right now, in Mansfield Court, we don't have a problem with stormwater. So you mentioned before, when it rains, I mean, my neighbors here, it doesn't flood, my basement's dry as a bone, my yard is fine. I'm on the last house on Mansfield, which is the lowest part in the elevation, I'll get to my question in a second. I walk my dog up that hill, so there's, it's coming downhill. So water, we all know, gravity's bad. I'm not an engineer, but just logic, water comes down. You're doing the best effort to make sure that nothing happens and affects the neighbors, and I appreciate that. But you mentioned also there's going to be an HOA in monies if there's a problem. First storm, there was a storm about four years ago when the town got wrecked. Was it five years? That was a hundred-year storm where it was awful. Our streets stay fine. What happens if it's not? And the water that's pooling here now gets fixed and hits our houses. So what's the process? How do we raise our hand? How do we say this needs to get fixed and fix not in two weeks, like now, or two years? Walk me through, if you can, please, how this works.
Yes, so real quick, on the legal side, I think that's where you're getting at, in the beginning at least, is that we're going to have an HOA, right? And the HOA is going to be a condition for us to be issued construction permits. So before we can start doing any type of development, there's going to be an HOA in place that this municipality's professionals, both their engineer and the attorney of review, and until they sign off on it, we can't record it. In that HOA itself, it's going to say that the responsibility of all the responsibility of that HOA will always be borne on the developer himself, until he sells each one of those parcels. So the benefit of that and the construction timeline, you're looking at about two years, two maybe-
How long would you say for the entire completion, from start to finish?
Yeah, about two years.
About two years. So within those two years, I'm more than confident we're going to have a few rainfalls in between, and we're going to know whether or not this system works. If in fact that initial escrow that they established is not sufficient enough, well, guess what? The developer's still there, and he's going to be responsible to fix it and replenish those escrow funds. And if he does not, he'll be in default, and I doubt this municipality would issue a CEO if he was in default of that. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that we'll have the added benefit of a two-year test period as to whether or not this proposed stormwater system actually does work. And if it doesn't, it's going to be the onus of the developer to ameliorate that issue, because absent doing that, he'll never have a CEO.
Okay, so we sell the last house, they move in, we get the hundred-year storm two days later. Our street floods out.
Yep.
It's a disaster.
Yep.
What's our recourse?
Well, the idea of it would be that the proposed escrow amount would be something that Rocco Marucci, your engineer, as well as the board attorney, feels adequate, right? So what can we do there? They can go and ask their consultants on what they believe would be an estimated escrow that would be enough to satisfy such a situation, right? Let's say hypothetically, they give a large number. They say it's a hundred thousand dollars, right? And exceeds it, it's a half a million dollars. What's going to happen there is that that hundred thousand dollars is going to go to the repair bid, and then that delta four hundred thousand is going to be de-irrigated, and the pro-rata share would be borne each one of those residential parcels themselves. So at the end of the tax year, we all have to pay our property taxes, they would have to pay in that hypothetical an additional hundred thousand dollars. If not, they'd be in re-irrigations.
So it'd be a mess.
It'd be a mess.
So our, so the concern would be you're taking down about what, how many trees are being taken down that are there, established right now, estimated?
About two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty, you're putting up how many?
Currently on this property, without, you know, specified landscape for each house, it's a hundred and twelve proposed trees.
We're losing half. And then we all know the trees with their roots embedded deeply, they're mature, they absorb a lot of the water, I assume. That's what they're there, that's part of the nature of what they do.
But again, as part of our stormwater design, we have to analyze the existing conditions, which takes into account all those existing trees and the wooded surface, as well as the proposed, which now takes into account all this impervious surface coverage. And we have to design that system to comply with state standards to reduce the amount of stormwater that leaves the site. So even post-development, it has to be less stormwater leaving the site.
Okay, I think this, based on what you're looking to do, taking down a lot of trees, again, I'm not an engineer, this is a big concern, because our street doesn't have a problem. I know what we, again, the street doesn't flood, homes aren't flooding. I see something like this, and we have an issue going on right now, I think this needs to go a lot deeper, because I don't see-
And again, I know-
I appreciate, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I don't know, and you're saying a lot of things that are really going, kind of going over my head, but it's not a problem now.
And again, even after the developer's gone, the homeowners' association still has to have this operations and maintenance manual that is tied to this HOA. And with that O&M, there's reporting requirements, essentially quarterly, that the HOA needs to report back to the township to show that these systems have been inspected, that they're functioning the way they are supposed to be functioning, and this needs to be inspected by a licensed engineer. And if there's anything that's identified that's not satisfactory, it needs to be corrected immediately. So the intent with the state, this is state mandated, the state requires that you file that O&M, and it's exactly for the reasons that you're essentially describing, is we need to make sure that this system is maintained for the life of these properties.
Okay, understood. Also, what are the hours of operation that you can do this type of construction? Is that eight AM to six PM, or Saturdays, Sundays?
I think it's no Sundays, it's definitely Saturdays, like nine-ish, I think there's a week, it's like eight, three, or thirty-five, or maybe six. There's very specific instructions and hours that go on.
Okay.
Don't even start with that.
Can I just say one thing quickly, because-
Everybody, you know, certainly we all, and nobody likes stormwater, we all get hurt about that. But so much of our town was built in the sixties, seventies, eighties. DEP didn't exist, stormwater wasn't a science. The water just flowed wherever it flowed. Somebody put up a retaining wall, it stopped the flow of the natural water. So anything that's been developed, you know, since the early nineties, certainly in the last five years, the DEP has very, very strict regulations. So to the point of what happens when we get flooded out, that's not what they're working on, right? They're working on making sure you never get flooded out. So it's about detention, slowing the rate, and cleaning the water. It's an extraordinarily, you know, exact, I wouldn't call it exact science, but it is a science. Guys get paid a lot of money to deal with it. The DEP continues to adopt stronger and stronger rules as we see more and more rain events. So somebody mentioned Scott Terrace. If you drive down Scott Terrace, there's a detention basin that holds water from the other lots. Those basins don't exist on any of our streets, right? They just let the water go, hits the street, and it goes right into the sewer and off to the nearest brook, and let's hope for the best. So there's a lot of what's been done more recently is far better than what's in and around our homes now. Whether it works with the five-hundred-year storm like a couple of storms we've had is a whole other story. I don't know that anything works that. But at least, you should take some comfort in the fact that this is a progressing science that is getting stricter and stricter and stricter, including just over the last four or five years, that's designed to make sure we don't have water just cascading in every direction and into somebody's basement, but it's being collected, it's being retained, it's being put back into the aquifer, hopefully cleaner than when it was on the street.
Can I just ask one more question? We're adding about a half acre of impervious. Do we know how much that adds to runoff a half acre? Is there any science or-
Yeah, I mean, that's all quantified within our stormwater design and report.
It's not a lot. I mean, I don't know if the half an acre is a lot, but it doesn't sound like a lot for a development. But is that going to substantially increase the runoff of half an acre?
Yeah, it's additional volume that's generated, which, yes, it means more stormwater, quantity-wise, is leaving the site, but it's leaving at a slower rate. So again, as Mr. Santola mentioned, that first, you know, on flush of a big storm event, the system gets overburdened, but we're required to hold that back. So once that system kind of clears itself out and empties out, then we're releasing our stormwater when that pipe has that additional capacity. So yes, volume-wise, yes, there's more stormwater generated when you have more impervious surface coverage. But the intention of our design is to have those infiltration basins to get some of it back into the ground, and the rest of it is held back, so it releases once those pipes kind of clear out, once the storm has passed.
And just to continue what Mr. Santola was saying as well, is that right now there is none of those kinds of benefits that exist on this property.
Right.
And maybe as hard as it is to believe that the building potentially of these houses and this system will improve what's there from not doing anything.
And not to defend the applicant, I don't know which side this application is going to go, but this is a geotechnical stormwater report that was in everybody's packet. This is a stormwater management summary that was in everybody's packet, and this is a stormwater management facilities, operations, and maintenance manual, to the point of, you know, how do we make sure that the system is working, that all of us get, and you can imagine, we all read it. But this is the type of thing that Rocco goes through with a fine-toothed comb, and makes sure that it meets the state's standards. And this is just the stormwater piece. You know, forget lighting, landscaping, and architecture, and all the other aspects of the application that come through here. So again, not looking to defend the applicant, just want everybody to understand, this is hopefully not guesswork, but science.
If you don't get access to the easement, how much of it, and you do an alternate method of getting the water off of the site, you know, how much does that change the water runoff?
The same quantity will be leaving the site, but rather than having a direct connection underground, it'll continue to flow overland as it does today. But it would still be an improvement when compared to existing conditions, because it's going to be, again, really slower than it is today. Even though it's still overland versus underground, it'll still just essentially flow overground through those residential properties eventually to the site or the roadway that is further to the south, be collected by that stormwater conveyance network, and be conveyed in the same direction it is under proposed connections, conditions with a direct underground connection. Either way, it will be a reduction and improvement.
Hi, I'm Daniel Goldman. I live at twenty-seven Ashwood Drive, which is block seventeen oh six, lot thirty-nine. We moved here in nineteen ninety-five, and we're told when we moved here that the land behind our house will always be woods, and it's landlocked, and it's beautiful. And I know I share the opinion of all the people that live around this entire area, that it's going to be decimated. There'll probably be beautiful homes, but I just wanted to share my opinion that I always thought that there would never, I did not get in writing that homes could not be built there. I was told that they were maxed out in sewers.
So just procedurally, this part of the hearing, if you have any questions for the expert, you can ask, and then at the end of the hearing-
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, they're just, you can finish up. But just, you know, for anybody else, at the end of the hearing, if you have any other opinions for or against, you'll get your chance then.
Oh, I did actually. The purple line, I'm sort of in the middle of there. If work has to be done, will they be removing trees that are actually on my property to do any of that work?
Only if we had the direct underground proposed connection.
I have a sewer, I have a sewer-
Correct.
In the middle of my backyard. I have a cap.
Currently, we're proposing the connection, as shown on our plans, to lot forty, your neighbor.
I'm thirty-nine.
You're thirty-nine.
I have the cap.
Correct. If we were to make a connection onto your property, potentially, yes, you know, we might have to take down some landscaping. However, currently, as we have it proposed, your property will remain untouched. We wouldn't be exceeding our property.
Okay, thank you.
Just to point, Mr. Goldman, actually, in the late nineties, there was a sewer moratorium in town. It wasn't a sanitary sewer, but you can't just shut your sanitary sewer plant down and not have any more development. So the sanitary sewer plant was improved, and it was, the capacity was increased. In the early two thousands, the moratorium went off, and you saw like a cork pop in town, when a lot of these different projects that had gotten approval but didn't have sewer, sort of went into the ground at the same time. So whoever told you that wasn't lying, but they weren't telling you that it wouldn't last forever, like if it were wetlands or, you know, or green acres preserved or whatever.
Are there any other questions from members of the public?
Hi, Brian Sklar, eleven Mansfield Court. I have a storm drain in my backyard and like a drain pump, drain pipe, like concrete, I guess, that runs under my backyard. And I'm wondering what, if you know what the capacity to hold, what capacity of water that system is able to hold currently?
So that pipe that you're talking about is actually the continuation of that purple easement that you see above here. As part of our analysis, no, we did not analyze the capacity of that pipe. We, as we mentioned with your board engineer, we will be video inspecting and making sure that it's in good working order. Although we didn't analyze that, again, with our proposed stormwater management system, it's going to have a less of an impact to that pipe, because we have stormwater getting into that slower. So the capacity of that pipe, under proposed conditions, would essentially be increased upon this development. So at this time, no, we didn't analyze the capacity. Could we provide you the capacity? Absolutely. It's a pretty simple calculation. We just don't have it, you know, here at the night. But when we make that connection, it would be a benefit to that pipe.
Can you explain how it would be a benefit?
Absolutely. With our stormwater management system that I mentioned in detail this evening, essentially by holding that back, that water on our site, infiltrating some of it into the ground, and releasing it slower. So again, big rainstorm comes, vent comes, you get that first flush of stormwater that overwhelms the pipes. Under proposed conditions, we're taking some of that, we're holding it back. So while it's being overwhelmed, we're holding some of that water back on our site until that pipe clears out and there's additional capacity, and then we're releasing it, you know, over a longer period of time, so that it's a benefit to that pipe, so it maintains capacity.
So are there any drains on the property currently?
On our subject site? No, everything sheet flows, essentially just flows overground through the neighbors that are directly to our south, to the next roadway, which is Ashwood, and then it's collected by the stormwater system within Ashwood, and then makes its way into that same drainage pipe that it does today.
So you're saying your system would slow that current process?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know what the pipes would be able to hold? In terms of capacity? Because I'm concerned, because I do get flooding sometimes in my basement, and I'm concerned with the extra water flowing, coming into my yard.
Again, yes, we could absolutely, you know, determine the capacity of that existing pipe. But again, under proposed conditions, we're making the capacity of that pipe better by holding that stormwater back on our site before releasing it to that pipe. So can we tell you our existing proposed conditions, what the difference and the impact that a pipe is? We absolutely could do that, I just don't have that, you know, this evening. Because I know it will be a change and a benefit for the better.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, Dan, based on your proposed stormwater management system, this municipal easement with the utility line would be able to accommodate the runoff, correct?
Absolutely. It does go through it today. It just enters a different way than we're proposing.
Right, because today, there's no stormwater improvements on the subject property, so technically speaking, a hundred percent of the rainfall is going into there at the same time.
Correct.
Estimate-wise, what type of reduction are you looking at?
Across the board for the different design storms, about fifty percent.
Okay, so about fifty percent reduction of it holding the water, so that it could permeate through the utility line, and then be recharged back in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Jonathan Abrahamian, I live on 5 Mansfield Court. I think it's... Yeah, it's a long one. So my question is more about the map itself, and I have to report back to the missus, so if you can do it in layman's terms for me. Is there a way that we can zoom in, like where I have the question?
Sure.
So like Block 15?
Right there. It's 15. It's right down there. To the right.
Yeah, so, so the... What exactly, like, where the board would describe a maintainable fence? Where is it exactly on this map?
So it's spread to the south of Lot 80. So this line right here is the proposed table. Your property's here, all you're getting is a six-foot fence. We're not touching anything on your property.
When you say a six-foot fence, meaning?
There'll be a six-foot fence on the property line between your property and the proposed parcels themselves. And on the proposed parcels themselves will also include landscaping as well, kinda doubling up the screening, if you will.
So what do these green dots, like, represent?
That is the proposed stormwater easement that we've mentioned. That's where our detention system will be located, below ground. So you won't see anything.
And so there's gonna be construction going on, like, in this area here?
Correct.
Okay, and at what stage? You mentioned that it takes like two years to get to the house, so that would be the first step?
Yeah, stormwater would have to go in first, along with the cul-de-sac.
Okay, and what would be the concerns one would have if they were living in my house about the construction that's going on there?
Noise.
Temporary noise, I would anticipate. But it would only be during permitted construction times.
So in your professional opinion, there's no risk of any adverse effects to the land, the water, anything of that nature?
Impacting your property? No. We're not touching your property. Stormwater, under existing conditions, doesn't go towards your property, and it'll continue to not go towards your property. It continues to flow in a southerly direction, which would be to the top of the sheet.
Understood. So, and that's all underground, so are the trees remaining there? Or are all those trees gonna be taken down?
Those trees would have to be taken down in order to put in that new infrastructure associated with the stormwater management system. But we would be proposing, you know, replacement trees along that drainage easement that we're proposing.
So there's no construction above ground, it's only below the ground?
It will be... The stormwater piping and everything will be under good ground after construction is complete. During construction, yeah, it'll be an open hole where they're laying the pipes, but they'll close it up quickly, and it'll be landscaped, and it'll essentially be open space area with new landscaping.
And replacement trees, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way that along the line of... So I have a fence that goes along the line. It's probably about six inches to a foot behind the fence. It's still my property. Is it possible to plant trees at the current time that are tall enough to block any of the construction out?
It's difficult to get really tall trees from a nursery. I believe, you know, usually eight to 10 feet is the standard tree that we're planting, evergreen tree, and that's what we'd be proposing in this situation.
If I may answer that question, if you would be okay with it, we would plant the eight to 10-foot arborid trees on your side of the property that's not interrupting the construction on our site before we commence any construction on either the stormwater or the right-of-way.
So when you say "on my property", you're talking about the property that exists in front of where my fence is?
Yes.
So directly behind my fence?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
My name is Xiaodong Kai. K-A-I is my last name. I live in...
And your first name, can you spell it?
Xiaodong, X-I-A-O-D-O-N-G. X-I-A-O-D-O-N-G.
X-A-I-O-D...
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah. I live in Livingston, Sims 2000, and leave 33 East McCullen, just right in front of this Lot 18 and 19. I believe the new road's going to, just in front of our house. And you're talking about the construction will be last two years, correct? And every time, like, there will be traffic, noise going through, and then our two bedrooms in front of East McCullen Avenue. And the new road will be in front of our house. So it will be very bad impact on our lifestyle, and I'm working from home right now. So I don't know if there is anything, you know, concern, you know, our neighbors, you know, besides this construction regulation that you guys discussed.
Wanna walk us through the construction regulations associated with the carter?
Yeah, I...
Including traffic control.
Again, yeah, we'll be required to comply with the construction hours, so the township code only permits construction during certain times of the week.
Yeah, I'm working from home. The same time as you're doing this stuff as well.
And I know we mentioned, you know, approximately two years start to finish, but this is... The most disruptive portion of the construction will be the proposed cul-de-sac roadway to go in. That'll be the first phase. Roadways, those can be constructed relatively quickly. I would say that road can be within, you know, the first six months would be in, along with the stormwater improvements. And then the five dwellings, those will technically take about 18 months to construct, start to finish. And the construction of a typical residential dwelling is not as disruptive as the construction of the roadway. The roadway will go quick, it will be in, and then, you know, the homes go up, and they're definitely not as disruptive as constructing a road. Traffic control measures would be required for the construction of the roadway. The police would have to be notified. They would have to be directing traffic when we first, you know, break ground and start that roadway. But with this development setback, once that road is in, I don't think it'll be too much more disruptive than the typical traffic that you see coming down East McCullen on a daily basis. Because once the workers are here, they're gonna be there for the majority of the day, working on the homes, and they'll leave towards the end of the day.
Yeah, but in and out, you know, there is a lot of traffic and noises, yes, as well, right?
But again, it's gonna be temporary, until the construction is over, and then it's gonna be typical residential construction or traffic.
Yeah, but still, like, you know, there's a road in front of us. It's, you know, totally different, you know, when we moved in, like, 24 years ago. So it will be, you know, impact our environment, and definitely impact our lifestyle, you know, qualities. So that's, you know, my concern. I know there are bigger concerns about flooding and anything else, but, you know, for us, you know, that's my main concern right now. And the road is just in front of us.
Just... I just, also to help with your concerns is that the planning board has a list of model conditions that go along with any approval, assuming that there's approval. If there's not an approval, then there wouldn't be, obviously. But if there is an approval, the model conditions, which are available on any resolution that's been approved previously, deal with the controls of hours of operation, cleanliness, protecting areas around the site while construction is going on. If there's blasting, the hours they can be done, not that that's gonna take place here, but that would be included in the approval, if there was an approval of any resolution where construction of this magnitude would take place. And it controls all of the areas that you're raising concern about.
I also, you know, I don't know, like, you know Chinese always has this Feng Shui. It's sort of like a religion or something. The road in front of a house is not a very good idea. So I don't know if you, you know, also consider, you know, the, you know, community, you know, Chinese community, you know, walking something like this, you know. You have to do some research on this. Yeah, that's it. Yep.
Hi, my name is Ken Deng, K-E-N, last name D-E-N-G. I'm living in 23 Ashwood Drive. 23, 23, which I believe is in Lot 40 or 41, or something. Yeah, it's very close. So I just have a concern about, do you really know about how badly the flooding was? It's like this. It's like a one feet or two feet deep of torrential water running through the street.
I think what the question is, is the... And I think you've been testing, I think the question is the impact on, you know, his home.
And, yeah, yeah, thanks, sorry about that. Yeah, so that's the...
That's a video.
Yeah, that's the video. No, my garage, front yard, front yard. And from the elevation map, I think the new development is actually the foundation of the houses is actually lower than our foundation, right? Intensive elevation.
Are... We're still higher on your side than you? So our basement elevations will probably be a little bit higher than your basement floor elevation.
Okay.
But yes, your dwelling at home is below our proposed...
So we are flush?
I think a little bit lower, but more or less, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, when this kind of water comes in, because they are lower, their first floor or ground floor, whatever, cannot be used.
But again, yeah, it's my professional opinion that with our stormwater management system that we're implementing, you're gonna see a benefit. And I think you're... I can't tell you for sure the flooding's gonna stop, but I think it'll be an improvement from what you're seeing today, because we're gonna be capturing a lot of that, rather than letting it free-flow towards your property.
It's a lot of water.
Yeah, we're gonna be capturing it.
Like, three hours, four hours of torrential, like, water flow throughout, through the street, like, one or two feet deep of, like, torrential flow. Are you able to catch? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's our intention. It's our requirement to capture the rainwater that drops onto our property. We need to capture that and put it into our system to release it slower to... The intention, again, is to have less of an impact to your property.
Okay, gotcha. So my last comment is, when this kind of flooding happens, they are going to suffer badly, much worse than what we suffered. Because they are lower than our intensive elevation.
The question is that the properties that are now lower, they won't see, you know, they won't see a way to do worse, as they were saying before, or they see an improvement after?
After this.
Yeah, again, an improvement. That's our... The requirement for stormwater is to hold it, release it slower, to result in less of an impact than compared to existing conditions.
Dan, when you guys designed your stormwater management system, did you take into consideration the existing conditions?
Absolutely, that is the first thing we look at.
The first thing we look at is the existing conditions?
Correct.
So in your expert opinion, the proposed stormwater management system will substantially reduce the runoff that they experienced today, because you're gonna hold the water longer, so it's not an immediate rush?
Yep, that is the exact requirement that we're designing to.
Right, and it's both a municipal and a state requirement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any homes that would do, in your professional, do worse? Or is this a benefit for all the neighbors?
Yeah, it's a benefit for all the neighbors, because we're holding that stormwater.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Chi Chuan Huang. Last name H-U-A-N-G.
And first name?
Chi Chuan, C-H-I-C-H-U-A-N.
Thank you.
Okay. I live in 50 East McCullen, and my lot is like 1706 Block 22. So if we can take a look, I just want to know what are we doing at the border there? Yeah.
Wanna walk us through the fencing and screening?
Yeah, absolutely. So scroll a little bit further up. I believe, yep, this is your lot, right, on the left-hand side?
Yes, so I have a Lot 22 and empty Lot 32, yes.
Okay, yeah, so it's these two lots that are directly on the left-hand side of the page there now. So right along our property line, between our property and your two lots, we are proposing a six-foot tall, solid vinyl fence. And then, as was shown on our previous exhibit, which is Exhibit A2, we are proposing evergreen screening between your property and our proposed dwelling.
Okay. So on the 22, right now, that's retaining wall there, so the one won't be touched, or?
No, your wall will remain, it will not be touched.
Okay, all right. And I just wanted to echo what Xiaodong's case, because when she bought a house, the house is based on the Feng Shui. It's good standing. And then right now, when this coming to change, her house is facing a big row. So totally changing the Feng Shui of her house. And you don't... If that's the case, then, you know, most of the people looking at Feng Shui won't buy the house. So just wanted to echo that, it's a big concept.
Any other members of the public for any questions for this witness?
Am I able to just ask one other question?
Sure.
Brian Sklar, 11 Mansfield Court. It's your professional opinion that the storm drainage system would be a benefit to the surrounding area? Is there also plans for an independent engineer to test and give their opinion?
As part of the application process, we had to submit our reports and data to the municipality's engineer, who is standing right here, Mr. Rocco Marucci. So I guess the question would be directed towards him.
So has an independent evaluation been done with respect to their proposed storm drainage system?
So we reviewed their drainage system to what they, as they mentioned, as it meets the state regulations. Because it's major development. Major development has to meet reductions. It has to meet groundwater recharge. It has to meet water quality. So we review the application and the stormwater component to that. As a condition of approval that we've asked them is they're tying into our storm drainage system, and is that they evaluate that storm drainage system and the capacity of that pipe. Is there another engineer that looks at it? No. It's only the township, our professionals, and the applicant's engineer. Well, Motte McDonald reviews our sanitary sewer and our water, our water. So we have a consultant that township engages for sanitary sewer and for water, because they have to make connections, they have to get DEP approval to make those connections. And so we have an engineer that reviews that. Stormwater components and the actual application. Myself as the assistant, and the township engineer, who's not present, reviews the application. So to show that, we review it to as if it meets the state regulations, like we mentioned, so...
And in addition to that, we also have to submit to the Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District, and they will review aspects of our stormwater management design as well, and make sure it meets their compliance, so...
So I understand that they have certain standards, but I guess my concern is what, like, will there be an independent assessment of the ability for that system to handle the potentially additional water?
Unless we engage another engineer, no. I guess there'll just be township.
We'll just be relying on...
And the townships, you know, are reviewers. Now, as I'm hearing tonight, obviously, there has been some flooding in Ashwood previously. This application, I just want to make clear that this application, what they're saying is not gonna fix that flooding. But, you know, I think that there's something we need to look at, you know, to see if there's anything that can be done. I think we have looked at many areas of the township for stormwater improvements, and it's very complex, because, as previously discussed earlier, much of the township was developed in the 50s and 60s. A lot of the infrastructure is aging, and, you know, you need to start at a certain point and upgrade as you can. You know, it's not a fix, you know, everything in one shot. So we could look at doing more drainage studies in these areas to see what we can do.
Okay, yeah, just, I'm concerned that we're just... No disrespect, you have a certain perspective that you're looking to, you know, implement with this, with this...
Is there a question? You have, I'm trying to answer, give an opinion on the project?
Yeah. I guess I just want clarity as to, will there be an assessment whether this system can handle the capacity?
I guess that question's already been answered.
The municipality's engineer has been the independent assessment. He's reviewed all the reports that have been submitted to determine whether or not it meets the standard of both the state and municipality, and he's deemed acceptable. In addition, it also has to be sent over to Soil Conservation, so why don't you speak about that?
Yeah, absolutely, so Mr. Marucci, he essentially works for you, he works for the township. He's making sure that our design complies with the town requirements and the state requirements that all towns in the, in the state need to comply with. So it's not only Mr. Marucci that's reviewing and, and making sure that our plans meet your requirements, it's also the Soil Conservation District that we have to submit to for an additional certification. And they're reviewing to make sure that, you know, we're not eroding the soil and washing soil off our site and towards your site. And they're also reviewing aspects of our stormwater management design to make sure that our off-site flow, again, meets those state standards. So it's us working as the applicant, and then we're submitting to both the township who's reviewing our design and the Soil Conservation District. So it's two different engineers that do look at the aspects of our design to make sure that we're meeting what we're required to meet.
For two different governmental engineer, and agencies which are charged with that responsibility to look out for your benefit.
Right, and, and does, does the evaluation that's, that's done, does it look at whether the system can handle the potentially additional flow?
That was a condition of approval, that they would evaluate our system downstream. And then we would review that, you know, supplemental information they provide us.
Okay.
But, but the off-site system, is a series of calculation based on, so it takes up how much ground there is versus how much square footage there is versus how often a storm occurs. It's a whole lot of math that's above my head that engineers do. And it's a standard the state creates that they design and that Rocco and the, our engineering department, with your tax dollars, looks at and decides if it works or not. So there's, he's like the referee, we're not going to trust this guy, we're going to trust our guy. Then he gives a report, which is available.
Is it available online?
Also, they said that they would comply with all the, you know, because Rocco went through it and provided, you know, a, a great deal of information and responses back to them, and they, they said they would comply with.
Yeah, our, our report, actually, if you go on the agenda, I believe it's linked, and that everything's on there, and you can see our engineering review. It's ten pages long, you know, so you can see everything we've.
Yeah, all this, all this information is on the website with, you know, with the tonight's agenda. So you can, you'll read it at your leisure.
If you want, you can contact engineering tomorrow, I can give you a copy of it also, so.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
There any other questions for this witness?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is C A O, and my property address, seven minutes for your call. And. Can you say your name again, please? Uh, C S K, C A O. And last name? This is my last name. And your first name? Z H O N G Q I N. Yeah, seven minutes for your call. I would like to let, let everyone know, now, it's raining day, right? My backyard has some water, but doesn't bother us to leave there. But I forgot you guys, I forgot to take care of me, because I just, I, you're going to build a new house. After you build a new house, please make it for sure, not going to increase the water to my, you know, backyard. Please, thank you, that's all.
I can assure you that the way the stormwater flows, it will not be going towards your property.
Okay, thank you, that's all, okay.
There any other questions for this witness?
John Bonder, seventeen Mansfield Court. There was a lot, a lot of talk about the storm system, and you keep saying that you may improve it. The question I have is, but you, you are adding to the storm system that we have now. So do you have enough, is there enough capacity to handle the additional flow? That's my question. I don't care what the state regulations or guidelines are.
You can't trust those guys, right? The, again, we're, it's less stormwater leaving the site, or, or, stormwater is leaving the site slower than it does today. So as a result of that, we are a benefit to the capacity of the downstream systems. Because it's, it's being held onto our site and has that capacity, or the pipe clears out, then we're adding our stormwater to it. So it goes, it's entering that system slower, so it is a benefit to the capacity of the downstream systems.
But you're adding something to the system that doesn't exist today?
No, no, it, it still goes there today, it's going there uncontrolled.
How? You're, 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 you're building a new manhole connection to the pipe, correct?
Correct.
So you're, so you're adding water, water into that pipe?
It still gets to that pipe.
How?
Under existing conditions.
How?
From a different area, off of Ashwood Drive. So it flows through the residence to the south of us, enters the inlets on Ashwood Drive, and then enters that same pipe. So essentially, we're bypassing the portion where it's going through the residential properties, and we're putting it directly into that pipe. So it still goes there under existing and proposed conditions, but it's a benefit because it's getting to that pipe slower than it does today. So, so it, it does increase.
Because the way this was described, it sounded like you're adding more water into the system, but you don't know whether the capacity exists for that additional water.
We have a direct connection now versus a downstream connection.
What you're telling me, that today it goes to Ashwood.
And then into that pipe.
Goes into the storm sewer, is there, and comes back?
Correct, the way it flows, yep, the, the stormwater flows from Ashwood, goes into this easement, it goes through Mansfield Court, and continues down towards North Livingston Ave.
Because I, I do know that it does flood between the, the Ashwood properties and the Mansfield Court. And on the, and there are drain pipes grading there. And at times that doesn't take the water away.
That's why we're holding it back longer on our property, so it, it gives that time to clear out before we're, we're adding it back in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Alright, seeing none, you're going to be calling your next witness?
Yes, I'd call my next.
Why don't we just take like a five or ten-minute break, and then, then we'll start with your next witness? We all set? Got to use this once. Mr. Psade, you know that we traditionally go to ten-thirty?
Yes.
So, you know, once we get to that point, we'll, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to, if you're done, great. If not, we'll have to get another date.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Our direct will be done.
We can call your next witness.
Thank you, I called my next and my last witness, my planner, John Tai Kina. Thank you. You're welcome.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, your full name and spell your last name for the court.
My name is John Tai Kina, T A I K I N A. I am a principal with All Things Planning and Development in South Brunswick, New Jersey. I've been a planner in the state of New Jersey since I completed my studies at Rutgers University in nineteen ninety-two. I've been lucky enough to keep my license a good standing for the last thirty-two years, they tell me that's a challenge. I've testified before more than a hundred and fifty boards around the state of New Jersey, including this one back in May. It's nice to be back. And I'm told my last three, my last three boards were Brick, Borden Town, and East Amwell. Terrific, does this board accept him as an expert in planning?
There any questions by members of the board? Then the board accept you as an expert in planning?
Thank you, oh, and Morristown. Well, that's four.
Then we've changed our minds.
Morristown is actually a funny one, but, but let's go.
John, are you familiar with the R four zone in the township of Livingston?
I am.
Is the subject property located within the R four zone?
Yes, it is.
Have you had an opportunity to review the zoning ordinances in the master plan?
Yes, I have.
Terrific, can you please walk us through the proposed variance relief we're looking for tonight, as well as the design waivers?
Certainly, so everybody did a nice job of, of talking about all the respective variance relief and design waivers that we need tonight, I'll go over them briefly. We have existing, and most of them relate to existing non-conformities that are be, that are being retained or changed in some way on lot nineteen, the existing home. So we have a, on lot nineteen, we have an existing side yard that is becoming a rear yard, that will be eight point, it will be eight feet in dimension. We also have a, an existing side yard that is becoming a front yard, and that front yard is. We also have a, an existing side yard that is becoming a front yard, and that front yard is proposed at 14.9 feet. And that is to the newly constructed Road A. And then finally, we have a combined side yard setback on Lot 19 that exists at 23.1 feet and is proposed now at 22.9 feet. It changes minimally because of the shifting dimensions of the lot. Additionally, we have, and they will all be, there'll be C1 variances to the, to the effect that they reflect existing conditions, such as the non-conforming front yards. And there'll be C2 variances to the, to the effect that they're anything that relates to the construction of the new road or to the new subdivision. Secondly, we have some design standards, some design waivers. First and foremost is for the radius of the cul-de-sac. We are requesting a 40-foot radius cul-de-sac, which would be compliant with RSIS, but it is at 40 feet. That is shy of the township requirement of 50 feet. Additionally, we have a waiver for driveways that have motor vehicles that can back out onto the street. And again, to try and minimize our impervious coverage, we have driveways on our cul-de-sac where the, where the people will just back out straight into the cul-de-sac because there is no real traffic there. And then finally, we have, that's the same waiver again. And then we also have a, excuse me, a variance for steep slopes, where we do have the steep slopes that we testified to in the middle of Lot 19. As we said, they are, they are existing man-made steep slopes from, that resulted from the grading of the backyard on Lot 19, most likely when the pool went in. Because he has a very flat backyard and then it kind of drops off as it goes back to the, to the drainage easement behind. And again, that is a man-made condition and an existing condition that we are proposing to disturb in order to construct the new homes. So, in this instance, we have a C variance relief. Again, for the existing conditions, there will be C1 variances that will specifically relate to a specific piece of property, which is lots 18, 19, and 20. In this instance, that existing condition is on Lot 19, where we have a front yard setback that actually exceeds your township requirement. The balance of the variances will be C2 variances. In this instance, the variances where the benefits will outweigh the detriments. As you know, that the standard is set forth in Kaufman v. Planning Board of Warren. And there, it was, it was such that those variances were warranted when the homes in question would be more in keeping in character with the, with the neighborhood than they would be if the relief were not granted. For lots that would be more harmonious in lot size, it could be seen as being substantially overweighting any detriment. So, we have previous existing lot sizes that were oversized in comparison to the neighborhood. We had Lot 18 at over 40,000 square feet, Lot 19 at over 40,000 square feet, and Lot 20 at over 40,000 square feet. Where existing lots have lot sizes around 9,500 to 12,000 square feet. Subdividing these lots to make room for the new single-family homes not only provides these homes and properties closer to what the board envisions for this area, but also provides Township of Livingston with additional housing options. Within the master plan, it states the R4 district is designed for single-family homes on lots with a minimum area of 9,375 square feet. We will be well in compliance with that. And as we've stated, I believe, four times, or else it'd be five times, all of the new homes will not require any variance relief at all. The second balancing test is Pullen v. South Plainfield, where you look at the benefits, the overall benefits of the project as, as compared to the relief that's sought. It's not just as it relates, and not just benefits as it relates to the relief, but it's the overall benefits of the project at large. And that is, that's our standard there. So, in terms of our positive criteria, as you know, we need to implement and promote some of the purposes of zoning. I would submit to you that there's two specifically. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that promote the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and the preservation of the environment. And G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. So, in this instance, we are proposing an appropriate population density as set forth by the township and this board in your master plan with roughly quarter-acre lots. That's more in keeping with the R4 district and more in keeping with what your master plan sets forth. In terms of, and you have heard extensive testimony about how we're providing for all the environmental improvements that are possible on the property, specifically as it relates to stormwater. I promised myself I wouldn't talk about stormwater, but I have to. We will be providing stormwater improvements. Those stormwater improvements will result in benefits both to the new homeowners, as well as to the existing homeowners, by reducing the rate of runoff that comes off of this property, as well as the engineering analysis that the applicant is committing to do as part of the conditions of approval. So, it's not just that we're saying our system is going to work. We're also saying that we are going to examine the existing system to make sure that, one, our water's going to fit in it, and, two, what are the things that need to be done to it to make sure that that can happen? And that is a critical, critical condition of approval that the applicant is agreeing to. In terms of, and then obviously, we need to talk about the negative criteria. Do we have any substantial detriment to the public good? Are we having any substantial impact on the zone plan and the master plan? We believe, we believe we're implementing some of the elements and goals and objectives of your master plan to preserve and enhance the primarily residential character of the community, and to promote a welcoming and aesthetically pleasing environment to control, control residential development and provide for appropriate, encouraging residential development in locations and at densities compatible with existing or desirable development patterns, and that can be properly serviced by roadways, utilities, and services. And you heard extensive testimony from our engineer that our traffic is not going to have an overburden on East McClelland Avenue, and that our stormwater and sanitary sewer systems will be designed in such a way that they will be accommodated within your existing systems. And again, we will be doing downstream analysis to make sure that it can be accommodated and to make sure that we're not having any negative impact on our surrounding neighbors. Finally, in terms of negative criteria, it's, it is a standard of substantial detriment to the public good. Again, we've, we've provided extensive testimony that we are at the appropriate density. Our relief that we're requesting is predominantly internal relief that relates to the existing property on Lot 9, Lot 19, excuse me, and is predominantly as the lot lines get weakened and figured around it. So, we will have, we'll end up with two front yards, two rear yards, and a side yard. It's somewhat of a strange-shaped property. And one of the questions that was asked before was, would the configuration of the street put the improvements that are in the rear yard in a variance condition? And the answer is no, because the front yard will be set on, on Road A at about 15 feet. So, anything that's beyond 15 feet from the roadway is in a rear yard, so that lot will remain in conformance. And then finally, in terms of Lot 21, the improvement, the improvement that was made there was with the, that five-foot strip that is on the east side of a proposed Road A, where, again, that's going to be a benefit to the township. And that's one of the reasons to grant the waiver that we're seeking, is that that improvement that will be there will then be under the auspices of our homeowners' association, not under the auspices of the township. And it will also not place a burden on Lot 21 by placing a front yard on that property in what would have been a side. So, what is their side yard will stay a side yard. What is their rear yard will stay a rear yard. So, Lot 21 is unaffected in terms of any land use impacts from the development of, of Roadway A. And then finally, impairment of the zone plan and the master plan. We are implementing the zone plan and the master plan. This is R4 development above 9,375 square feet. All of our new lots comply, all of our new development will comply. Our, all of our relief relates to existing additions on Lot 19, predominantly because it's a ranch, and it ends up being a little overrun in terms of your, in terms of your maximum habitable area of the home. It does not create an FAR situation. We're under the FAR, but you also have a cap. So, we would violate the cap by a de minimis amount, but we do not violate any FAR standards. So, for all those reasons, I believe the board has the ability to grant the variances and the waivers that we're, that we're seeking. The, the standard for the waivers, you know, is that, one, it's, that it is reasonable. The request is reasonable. I think our requests are reasonable in terms of the width of the right-of-way for the benefits that we talked about for Lot 21, as well as to not have the improvements in the public realm. And then, secondly, to provide for the 40-foot cul-de-sac. We think that's more than appropriate. Limits are impervious services to, to a little bit, to cut down on some of the stormwater impacts. And, and we think that they're reasonable and that not complying with them would be somewhat of a hardship to the applicant and, we believe, to the surroundings. So, we think we're providing benefits there. So, for those reasons, I believe the board has the ability to grant the relief we're seeking, and I'm available for your questions.
I have no further questions. Size and FAR, and not go to zoning for any variances?
Yes, that is correct. As a condition of approval, we would agree that all proposed improvements would be absolutely compliant with the bulk measurements in the R4 Zone Code. We would not engage in any forum shopping, going for a C or a D variance.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board?
I have just one. The, thank you. The side yard becomes a front yard because of the application.
Correct.
How does the law treat that? Created your own, that create a higher burden on the positive or the negative criteria?
It does not. It does become a C2 variance. It is a non-conforming condition now, in that it's only eight feet now. So, we're in a not, that side yard is not-
You mean it's only eight feet to the property line?
Correct, only eight feet to the property line now. So, we have a non-conforming side yard condition now. Because we're changing it, then we need to, then we need to, we can't rely on the C1 criteria, which would be just that, oh, it's a condition of the lot. It's not a condition of the lot, it's a condition we're creating. So, we have the somewhat different, and I think somewhat higher, standard of a C2 to say that the benefits of granting this variance outweigh the detriments. And again, the benefit of granting it is that we, we're, one, we're able to build the street, two, we're able to retain the existing homes on East McClelland. And it is a much, it's much better for the neighborhood, if you will, that the front door in East McClelland is going to look largely like it does today, again, with, with the roadway, with the roadway coming in for the one house, but the majority of that frontage stays exactly as it is, and the new development kind of quote-unquote gets tucked behind. So, I think the benefit of doing that outweighs any detriment of granting that variance, because if you don't, then you're, fine, you're putting the road there, but you're demolishing the house, and we're likely building two new homes in lieu of the one existing.
Any other questions from the board?
I think it was mentioned, but do we have a document from the fire department regarding the size of the cul-de-sac? I didn't see it in the packet, in my packet, in here.
Somebody else, not me.
If I may, I'm going to call back up my engineer to answer that question. Well, no, I'm going to have him answer that question.
So, we just had an email from your fire chief, which essentially notes that he reviewed the application, and the only thing that he requested was an additional fire hydrant, which we provided at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Was this more like a stench into evidence? I mark it as A3.
Any other questions from the board? From our professionals?
None for me.
Members of the public, any questions for this witness as to his testimony?
My name is Lucille Santinelli. I live at 38 East McClelland Avenue, Lot 19. I heard a lot of Lot 19s over there. I just need clarification. When you say you need a variance, does that just mean you're just getting permission to be off? You know, that you're not complying?
Correct.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. And my other question is, when you said there's a dip in my backyard, you're going to go into my backyard on my side of the fence?
Let me call up my engineer to answer these questions, if the board doesn't mind.
Now, your backyard, your proposed conditions will remain untouched, other than the piece that we're subdividing off, that's where the dip is, in the woods. The existing steep area past the pool and everything, and past the portion that'll be subdivided off, there's, there's a dip. It slopes off. So, the pieces that you see, that will remain your property, completely untouched.
Oh, okay. And when you say there's two, what you call them, fronts and two backs, is that engineer talk for a corner house?
Yes.
Yes. Exactly what it is.
Yeah. I have a lot of other questions, but I'll go through the lawyers.
Please.
Any, any other questions from members of the public? Seeing none. This is the opportunity for anybody that want, oh.
Hi, Chi Chuan Huang. So, I have Lot 22 and 32, which is conjunction to this plan. I'm actually just asking, requesting whether you can consider to include in 32 and part of 22 as part of your plan to include it. I just use it as an opportunity to talk to you, to request.
We can absolutely have that conversation outside, and I'm sure you might find above nothing more than to expand this development project. Yes, absolutely. But as far as testimony for tonight.
Okay.
As far as his hearing that, yeah, wouldn't be part of it.
Yeah. Maybe we'll get a broker fit.
Any other members of the public with any questions? So, any members of the public that wish to make a sworn statement, either for or against the application? This would be your opportunity.
Xia Dong Kai, 33, East McClelland. I already mentioned it, as I said it previously. It's a little bit against our culture, you know, build a row in front of you when, when we bought the house. Yeah.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Say, repeat it again. Yeah, I live in 33 East McClelland Avenue, and the row will be built in front of a house. And based on the Chinese Feng Shui, it's sort of not a good sign. Yeah. And it's noisy, it's going to be, you know, impact our life quality. Yeah, thank you.
Michelle Lipowski, 25, Ashford Drive.
Could you raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. You swear the testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm, I mentioned my concerns earlier. I'm very concerned also about another major subdivision in this area of town. There's a lot of teardowns going on and new building happening in this area, which also stresses the infrastructure, considering this area was built in the 50s and 60s. And with a lot of these teardowns, there are- And with a lot of these teardowns, there are not sewer improvements such as in this project. The schools are also stressed. It's putting a lot of new development in the community in this area. Harrison Elementary is the most populated elementary school in the community. We are not seeing a lot of infrastructure improvement, streets, et cetera. McClellan is a heavily traveled road. Ashwood is a heavily traveled road, a lot of traffic. I don't see how this won't put an increase to that, and we vehemently oppose this development.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, no? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Passat, any closing remarks?
Yes. I think everybody heard today that the only concern, the main concern, is stormwater. Stormwater is the issue. As you heard from the testimony from our experts here tonight, today, existing, there are absolutely no stormwater improvements on the subject site. What we're proposing is exactly that, a stormwater management system to not only mitigate but also assist with the existing utility lines. Specifically speaking, we have agreed on the record to test those utility lines to ensure that they do have that capacity. And if they do not have that capacity, it will not be the municipality's responsibility, but rather our responsibility to fix that. So for all those reasons above, we hope you guys find on the affirmative.
The parties having had an opportunity to make closing statements, it appears that the applicant holds the person's... And the board members have had reasonable opportunity to hear the evidence, to hear and that the evidentiary record of this hearing ought to be closed. Absent objection. In the absence of any motion for a continuance, the evidentiary record is closed, and no further testimony or evidence shall be heard or received. So the board members now will have an opportunity to discuss their thoughts. One way or the other.
So looking at it, and I do think, and I know it's difficult for the residents who don't read these stormwater reports and things, but essentially, as it relates to stormwater, I think the testimony did establish that currently you have a situation where you have three-plus acres completely surface-flowing, all the way down to Ashwood, getting in and ending up in the same pipe, and doing it immediately at the same time as all the other water from the storm. What the testimony establishes and as required by the state of New Jersey regulations is they are retired, you know, required to retain, while there is ultimately some additional volume because of the greater impervious surface, one, they are retaining it on-site and then distributing it at a much slower pace over time, so actually reducing the immediate surcharge. And with stormwater, it's all about timing. It's not, it's when the water hits, not necessarily how much water hits. The same amount of water spread over three hours can have no impact, as opposed to the same amount of water in 10 minutes. So I am satisfied that the plan, and I know and I have every confidence, and I want to, I think, Rocco sort of undersold himself when he said just the town, because Rocco and our township engineer are both licensed professional engineers and very qualified and capable to review these plans. In addition, there's the additional safeguard of the soil conservation district. Again, the lots all do meet the standard. The applicant is committed to not having, and not seeking any additional bulk variances for the houses, so the houses will be limited to the current bulk standards. So I'm satisfied that the overall, that they've met their burden for the C1 on the C1s. Again, most of those are existing variances for the two existing houses that remain, that are already there, and they are located where they are, as well as the criteria for the C2 on the overall planning. I did make some notes of some, one thing I would note as well, and I'm not sure, and I should have brought it up earlier, within the actual site plan package, Sheet 8, there's a landscape plan, but then we, in our package, had a separate individual landscape plan that actually did show some street trees along the entrance drive, which I believe Ms. McManus had referenced. So I don't know if you guys responded to a comment and submitted a new plan that shows street trees, because I have that document, but would certainly encourage you to do that, and particularly if there's an opportunity to utilize a sighting of those street trees that would perhaps soften any view across the street to address the resident who was concerned about looking at a street. I would strongly encourage that. Looking at it, I think the street more lines up almost between her and her neighbor as opposed to directly across from her house. The additional conditions, obviously, you've agreed to comply with the engineer, township engineer's report and the requests and everything set forth therein, including surveying and TV-ing the existing stormwater pipe. Also a condition you agree to, to have each house will have their own emergency generator to at a minimum power the sanitary sewer ejector pumps. Obviously, if you go bigger and power the whole house, that's up to you, but our concern is the sanitary pipe. I think there was a commitment to plant additional, and at the outset, plant Arbor Vita along the eastern property line to provide some additional buffer even during construction to the residents on Mansfield. And then would strongly encourage, and for my two cents, any of the three residents. It clearly is a better solution, and to the extent you couldn't follow it, if this is approved and they can't tie directly into that pipe, they will still retain the water on-site, but then they will just release it on the surface on their own property, and it's still going to run down through the properties on Ashwood, get back into the same drain, and then come back to that same pipe. So to avoid that water running across the properties on Ashwood, it would behoove one of the three or somebody to allow them to directly tie in. And that would, of course, be conditioned on, you know, having a legally binding agreement, and also proper restoration of any fence or disturbance that was done. So those would be conditions I would suggest.
So also the lot surface drainage application that would be submitted?
Yes.
And I think all the other conditions that have been put on the record, just that have already been agreed to, to be included in, you know, if approved in any final resolution.
Just to add to what Barry said, I think it's important to note that the five new lots, the five new lots, as was said over and over again, don't require any variance. So, you know, people have rights to develop their property, and this site, you know, fits it with very minor variances that I think, you know, are minor and, you know, not immaterial necessary, but certainly they meet the statutory criteria. The other thing I would say that's a benefit here is the applicants agree, we have in town what's known as McMansion ordinance, which says you can't build a big house that would go into R1 zone in an R4 property without going to the zoning board. So we did that a long time ago to try and stop these houses that are, don't fit the neighborhood. So by them agreeing to stay within the R4 standards, they're saying, we're going to build homes that fit, you know, Ashwood and Mansfield, that aren't necessarily giant homes on small lots. So I think that's a benefit to the overall town, and I think, you know, the more we can try and do that, the better, right? So that we have all different levels of housing within the town, and not everything that's built is, you know, driven to the highest point in the market. So we saw this application a long time ago at the track, and it's come a long way. I encourage you to look at Rocco's letter. There's a lot of things in there that they'll have to meet. And, you know, I think overall, while people don't necessarily love change, I don't see how we can deny that.
Is there anybody else? So we'll just need a, either a motion to approve or disapprove the application. Somebody wants to make that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve, subject to all the conditions that have been put on the record.
Are we going to vote on, we're going to get a resolution first?
We're going to vote now and then, because they've agreed to everything that's on the record.
Okay, but just want to make sure that we see what's, that everything is included on that resolution that was approved.
Exactly right.
Because there was a lot of it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Mr. Reber had to leave unexpectedly for an emergency, and in fact, he asked me if he could take his, hold on to his stuff.
I'm sorry. Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Ms. Kooji?
I can't even hear who she's calling.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you're acting in place of member FAS.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santola?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
With that, if I can have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Okay. Right now, no, but you'll let me know.